By the way, I have time. I do it myself. I put the dry el, I put them in a bag and I press them myself. Dry el works very well. It works well. Um, yes, I can take out a sheet.
I didn't know.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. You have everybody? Mr. Phytros and trustee O'Neill?
Yes.
Yes, we're here. Legions to your flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
And one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty first of all.
Thank you. Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting the interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Ridgefield Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof placed in the Bergen Record, municipal building, Board of Education offices, and district website. Public participation instructions. Public participation will be conducted both in person and virtually through Zoom. All public will be muted throughout the meeting. Public participation comments are limited to five minutes. The public will be able to both speak and be seen by the board when participating virtually, telephonically via Zoom. Individuals participating virtually that wish to make comments during the public participation will need to raise their hand by clicking the blue hand icon at the bottom of their Zoom window. Individuals participating by telephone that wish to make comments during public participation will need to hit star nine on their telephone to raise their hand. The business administrator slash board secretary will then unmute individuals one at a time to speak in the order that their hand was raised. Roll call. Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
Mr. Phytros?
Here.
Mr. Gomes? Dr. Martinez? Mrs. O'Neill?
Yeah.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Thiemann?
Here.
Mr. Verselli?
Here.
Mr. Cathcart? And President Gibbons?
Here.
Also present, Acting Superintendent Dr. Barry Haynes, School Business Administrator Mrs. Carrie Grabstein, New Jersey State Monitor Mr. Wayne Demakoff, and Board Attorney Ms. Carrie Wright.
Thank you, Mrs. Grabstein. Like to move the past meeting minutes. Um, is there a second to that moving minutes? Trustee Verselli? Yes. All in favor?
Hi.
Are there any opposed or abstentions? No. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to move on to communications.
I do have one thing to mention that state auditors will be back in December to follow up on the state audit that was done, which was related to the deficit in the district and they will be back in December. So we'll be planning and preparing to address, to make, well, make sure that we've addressed all of the findings.
Are there any other committee reports? Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes. Um, the Faculty and Programs Committee met on Tuesday, October 5th at five, at 5:00 PM. We discussed, the members that were in attendance were President Gibbons, also all committee members, Mr. Gomes, Dr. Martinez, Mary O'Neill, and our Acting Superintendent Dr. Haynes. We discussed the Director of Assessment Accountability and Grant Management position, which is on tonight's agenda, FP 54.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Fernandez, Finance?
Yes, um, we met yesterday, um, October 12th regarding the various grants, new, new applications we're putting out for grant programs. The various items you have put forth and published in today's agenda. And then we also went over our budget to actuals. As, as Ms. Grabstein stated, we are, we're all under state audit. Um, and we, we look forward to discussing our audit findings when the orders come back in December.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Verselli, Buildings and Grounds?
Oh. Buildings and Grounds, hey.
That Tom doing? Trustee Kathy?
Tom wants. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met, we, we, along with the contractor. Uh, discussion was the gym floor and other ways to honor people of this community. We're looking at different ways to do that.
Thank you, trustee Cathcart. Do we have anything for personnel? Trustee Thiemann, uh, anything for personnel?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Trustee Martinez, uh, Social Justice?
Dr. Haynes has informed us that sometime in November, hopefully before, um, the holidays, we'll be meeting for a, I guess it would be Cafe Three, where we'll be hearing from teachers more directly about how the things that the board spoke about in kind of general terms have played out in the classroom and where they are with their personal development, PD, personal develop, professional development, sorry, personal development too. And that should happen in, in, um, November before the holiday.
Thank you, trustee Martinez. That concludes communications, I believe.
Policy.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee O'Neill.
That's okay.
Policy, um, communication, thank you.
Yes, uh, the Policy Committee met last week. Present were, um, Dr. Haynes, myself, Mr. Gomes, Dr. Martinez, um, Ms. Rodriguez, and Mr. Gibbons. Um, we discussed many policies, including policies regarding, um, school employee vaccination requirements, emergency and crisis situations, um, student transportation, eye protection, and, um, education of homeless children, um, various other policies that can be seen on, that we're voting on.
Thank you. Um, we can move on if, um, it's okay with the superintendent's report, please?
Yeah, that's fine. Nancy, can you go ahead and elevate Nurse Erin Aguilar? You're good? Okay, thank you. So the superintendent report will begin with a, a report from Nurse Erin Aguilar on the status of COVID and, uh, I believe a little bit about vaccinations in our district.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I wanted to start off, first of all, just to give a little bit of positive news. Um, we have quite a bit going on here in the district, but I did get the recent numbers for the COVID cases in the weeks. We were seeing, um, high double digits just a few weeks ago. We're back down to kind of low single digits, so that's kind of promising. I think that, you know, we're going back in the right direction here in Ridgefield Park. Um, we are seeing that through the schools also. We are seeing a lot of illness amongst the children throughout all four buildings. It's kind of just common childhood illnesses. We're seeing strep throat, we're seeing rhinovirus. Um, we're seeing just regular cold symptoms, ear infections. There have been some COVID cases, but nothing that's been too concerning to us. I do want to give a little reminder to parents to continue to evaluate your child before you send them to school. Remember every Sunday that letter goes out, there's an email that's sent out in a blast, just reminding you of all the COVID symptoms. If your child is sick, please keep them home, reach out to your school nurse rather than sending them to school. Even though your child may not have COVID, please remember that all of these other illnesses are still contagious. So everybody thinks, oh, it's not COVID, it's safe to send your kid to school. If it's strep throat, other kids still can get it. If it's a common cold, other kids still can get it. So please keep them home, call the nurses, keep us updated. We are trying to keep the staff and the students safe and we can only do that if we have the parents' cooperation also. Um, as far as staff vaccinations, we're coming.
We froze Nurse Aguilar. If you could just repeat that last line, Nurse Aguilar.
There, there I am. I'm sorry, I lost you guys. Um, I'm sorry, I'm working remotely from my car, so, um, so staff vaccination requirements are coming up. Um, it begins next week, so we've been putting together some, um, information throughout the district. We have just about most of our staff members accounted for and pretty happy to say that we're looking at 93% of our district staff have been vaccinated. So I think that's wonderful. Um, we still have a little, a couple more people that are reporting, some of our outside companies that are working within our buildings, um, but for most part, we're looking at about 93% um, vaccination rate. So starting next week, staff members that are not vaccinated will be required to be, um, tested either weekly or bi-weekly based upon the activity level that's determined from the Health Department. That's where you see a lot of the times with the color coding and the Cali score. So we're just waiting for confirmation from our Health Department HARP to see if it's going to be once or twice a week at this time. We did apply through the state to have a testing procedure done. The, the company will come in, do the testing, do the reporting back to us. Each school district nurse, a school building nurse will track their building staff members that are unvaccinated. But until that is in place, because we are still waiting for the state to come in and finalize some things for us, I do have a session, an information session that I'll be attending next week for them. In the meantime, staff members that are unvaccinated will be required to get tested on their own and report back to their building nurses until we have that program up and running for staff members. Anybody have any questions?
Yes, I have, I have a question. I've, I've heard in this kind of act though, that some districts are able to test students in school, uh, when somebody comes in, uh, which would present, uh, would take a burden away from the parents of having to run over to the doctor and get tested and wait, any, any plans on that? Any grants or anything we can apply for?
So this program, um, is, is covers more along the lines of something that you're doing like a spot testing, not really like symptomatic testing, because that would then entail all this district nurses to be able to do it, which makes things a lot more complicated. So this company will come in if we decide to, if, if things start to get a little out of control and we start to do spot checking, whether our athletes or just our students, that company will cover those things also. Um, but I don't think, and I'm not 100% sure, but I don't think it's going to be able to be done for symptomatic students that we're sending out. But we are referring them to some local places that is a little bit more convenient. I promote Holy Name Hospital. I hope that I'm not, you know, overwhelming them with, um, people, but they're amazing. It's a drive-through. You drive one town over, you don't have to get out of your car, you register online and their results come back within 24 hours. So that is a definite bonus here in this area. So parents that are looking for some COVID testing, it's probably the best place to go. When you go to some of these urgent cares, yes, they're doing rapid tests, but PCR results take three to five days to come back. Um, and I know that some of the other local doctors' offices, pediatricians' offices are about the same. So we do recommend Holy Name Hospital for quick results to come back. Any other questions?
Thank you, Nurse Aguilar.
I can want to thank not only Nurse Aguilar, but all of the nurses in the district because of there are COVID exposures and it's just part of the routine that we deal with, but the nurses take the brunt of this uh, in making sure that people are tracked and, and talked about and, uh, people are contacted. It's a lot of work, so thank you again, as always.
Thank you. We are, we are all working very hard, um, and we're, you know, all looking forward to this coming to an end sometime in the future and getting back to a little bit of normalcy, uh, because the offices have been very super busy. You know, we are treating everybody as if it's a possible COVID case and we're looking forward to days that, that is behind us and we can move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the nurses in the district, uh, who have been working so diligently throughout this whole process. Thank you.
Thanks.
So I'm going to switch to sharing my screen. And here we go. Coming to, uh, going to focus on a couple of presentations tonight that go back to our three district goals. And we're going to focus on two of them. Actually, the first one comes back to what Dr. Martinez said, uh, in a report from one of our staff members, Jamie Hasselberger, and the first district goal being, let's see if I can get that right. All students known, included, cared for, and evolving in their self-awareness, identity, and agency, which talks about our social emotional learning and our social justice. And so some of the things that we've been doing as far as professional development, I'm going to uh, refer back to our social justice resolution that the board passed about a year and a half ago and remind the public that that is something that this board is committed to as far as social justice. You're welcome to go ahead. I'm telling the public, you're welcome to go ahead and look this up online because there are bullet points there that this board was committed to putting into a resolution and ensuring that resolution is enacted through activities throughout our days and throughout our curriculum. So part of that, uh, part of the way that activity happens is through professional development and looking at the current resources that we have through a culturally responsive lens. So we're looking at culturally responsive education. Uh, we're looking at, uh, bringing Little Ferry students over at, uh, Jamie Hasselberger. We'll talk about that in a second. And we're partnering with CBH Care, which is one of the resolutions in the board package tonight, a continued partnership with CBH Care to continue some of the mental health activities that we've already started in the district. Jamie Hasselberger, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me and giving me the opportunity to speak on, um, these initiatives. At the end of August, uh, nine members of both the English and Social Studies Department, along with the supervisor of English and Social Studies, um, Mrs. Corinne Perron and myself, met with Fidel D Consulting Firm, um, for culturally responsive education. And we had the opportunity to use the NYU scorecard and look at our curriculum. The English Curriculum seven through 12 and Social Studies Curriculum seven through 12, to recognize the importance of including students' cultural differences in all aspects of learning. Um, and it offered a comprehensive analysis of how culturally responsive our curriculum is. Uh, through our work, our two and a half hour session, um, our scorecard, we're, we're emerging. We have emerging awareness and we're, we're happy with that, but we also recognize that we have a lot more work to do and we're excited to do the work together. Uh, we have an upcoming, um, session again with Fidel D at the end of the month, um, where we will review that curriculum and the consulting firm will offer us materials and how we can enhance our curriculums in both social studies and English, so we can move beyond emerging. And so our curriculum is representative of our students, of our community. So we're very, very excited for that opportunity. So thank you to Dr. Haynes and the Board of Education, um, for that professional development, um, and that contract that we have with Fidel D.
And Jamie, before you move on to the next point, uh, I was always interested because after you did that professional development, well, going in, we all thought, oh, we're doing great. You know, we've got great resources, uh, we're very culturally respective and responsive and we're going to be great. Then all the teachers went to training.
Right.
This is, this is why we are all adult lifelong learners, right?
100%. And it was, it was an amazing learning experience because it's just what Dr. Hayne said. Well, as, as the, the professionals, the teachers, we, we sat together and we're like, no, we're, we're doing a great job. We have, you know, great materials in our curriculum. And then the scorecard really breaks it down. Where you have to score the diversity of your authors. Like, oh, okay. Maybe, you know, we're not quite there. Um, representation of our students, of our community. Are we really representing everyone in the materials that we have? Um, social justice, is that being approached? Which obviously is so important because that is our board resolution. That is our commitment to make sure that our curriculum is matching that. Um, teacher materials, do we have the materials that we need to be culturally responsive? Um, and materials and resources beyond. And so looking at all of that, we're like, okay, we're good, but we're, we're not that good, but we can be really good and we can eventually be great. And that's what we're super excited, um, to work toward and work toward together and have that conversation. So really, it was an incredible opportunity, um, and we're super excited for our next, uh, session at the end of the month. Really wonderful. Second point on, on there, Little Ferry Shadowing Program. To share the wonderful things that are going on in our building with our teachers, with our students. We want to show our Little Ferry students before they are here in ninth grade, come be a scarlet for a day. And so over the course of 13 Fridays, starting at the end of October and going through December, uh, Ms. Anderson, our ninth grade counselor, um, will arrange with Little Ferry students, around a dozen students at a clip with permission slips, arranging the busing to get them here in the morning. They'll come and check in and guidance. Ahead of time, they will be matched with an upperclassman of like interests and they will follow that student through the entire day and sit in on the classes, be an active participant if they want in the class, experience lunch here, our outdoor cafe. And working through the lunch line in the hallways and, um, and really seeing that this is a great place and we do have so many opportunities to offer all of our students. So we're excited. We did have that two years ago, but obviously the pandemic, you know, put a stop to that. So we are really excited to, to bring that back. Um, and then finally, um, we will continue our partnership with CBH Care, a community-based, um, health program. They are located in Paramus and it is an agency, uh, where we can refer our students and families both who are struggling with their mental health, which ultimately affects their education. And so with a wraparound program, we've established a very great relationship with them to work with our students in the therapies that they can offer and then how they can then come back and be successful in the classroom. So we're, again, very thrilled to continue that partnership with CBH.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Hasselberger. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would tell the Board of Education and the public that these, uh, three activities are highlighted in different board resolutions. The culture of the responsive education is a resolution to hire Fidel D Consulting. A Little Ferry Shadowing Program is mentioned in there as far as, uh, the dates and the times that students are coming over. And mental health, you'll see a resolution to provide services out of the Chris Act to pay for more CBH healthcare. So those are three things in the resolution. I'm going to move on to another one and invite, uh, Mrs. Diane Thiemann up. So our third board goal has to do with expanding opportunities and capacities for our students in career readiness and CTE programs. And different kinds of, well, as, as we did last year, graduating eight students with associate's degrees and different vocations. And the one we're going to highlight tonight, and I'm going to pull this up, was just two days ago, uh, our first aviation class, which contains some ninth graders and I'm thrilled about. Hold on a second. Go. Received their first trust certifications. Trust certifications are actually sanctified by the FAA and it means that these students can read airspace maps. They know that, they know the area around Teterboro Airport where you can fly drones, where you can't. The larger drones have to be FAA certified, so they have to know they can't be flying in airspace close to where airplanes take off or land. And we are in the tri-state area, uh, for airspace. So it's pretty exciting that these students earned their first trust certification. And there's the class looking pretty excited. Now, that's our ninth through 12th program, which we started this year and it will be a four-year program offered by AOPA, as we talked about last year, that will lead students to both drone certification and if they choose by their senior year, uh, flight certification. But as a feeder program, I'm going to ask, uh, Mrs. Thiemann and a student to demonstrate some of that. We start in the eighth grade, a class on aviation. And I'm, I'm not going to steal your thunder. Go for it, Mrs. Thiemann.
Good evening, everyone. Very excited to speak to some of the amazing programs we have going on at the middle school, especially our cycle classes. I have with me here, Kalil Rodriguez. Kalil's currently in all of our honors classes, but one of the classes that he's very, most excited about is, um, his drone class that he's attending to. Um, he's going to do a little presentation in a few minutes for us. But in the meanwhile, I'd just like to talk to you a little bit about the cycle offerings we have. So students in the seventh and eighth grade can choose to participate in the long year, uh, year-long band classes, chorus classes, art classes, but they can also, um, choose what's called a cycle. And the cycle is four semesters and they have different offerings. So for seventh grade, we have computer coding, we have public speaking, computer skills, which focuses on Google Docs and how to navigate Google Classroom. We have a cycle art class. And then moving into eighth grade, we have our traditional art band and chorus. And then we get into our cycle classes where we have a research course. We have woodshop, which is always been a fan favorite of our students. They, um, are able to make at least two projects during the semester and learn how to use many of the different tools. Then they go on to engineering class. Pre-engineering tech is a semester course. Students are currently designing and building motorized cars using machines and mechanism skills. They are using their knowledge of gear relationships to optimize their designs for speed. Students are learning that it's okay if your first, second, or third design doesn't work out. I have, um, been in those classes for the past three weeks and during those three weeks, I can that's okay. I can say that, um, they've been trying out different types of machines to use with building the cars. They've been able to have them, um, take off. Today, they were actually letting them race down the hallway, which was amazing. Some of the pictures that you're going to see are of that. They had, um, a great time doing that. And then moving on to the cycle and flying machines, which is where our drones are featured. And during that, the flying machine cycle class, students learn the basics behind flying unmanned aircraft systems, which is referred to as a UAS, also known as a drone. Federal Aviation Administration Safety Rules and Flying Federal Aviation Administration's safety rules and flying regulations, general aviation policies and guidelines, and how to create videos and take photos. Halfway through the first marking period, students already have learned about, in four short weeks, guidelines for safe drone flying, both indoors and outside, how to care for and operate the Telo, which is the beginning drone that Kalil is going to demonstrate in a few minutes, how to take off, operate, and land the drones using manual controls via smartphone and the Telo app, how to take off, operate, and land the drones with fun trick maneuvers, how to respect assigned airspace and maintain safe flying distances and altitudes, how to work as a flight team with a first-person pilot, line-of-sight assistant, and airspace coordination. In the second half of the marking period, students will then fly proficiency into play as they use the photo and video features of the Telo drones to create interesting and creative content on their own. Kalil?
So I do want to tell people that there is a live video camera on that. It's a HD camera. So this drone can take camera footage and also photos. They can download them to the photos. They can use them in student-created projects, especially from a high altitude. If you go outside, you can take those great videos that you see of surveilling the school building and coming back with a video. So, nice job, Kalil. It's okay. The sides and the propellers are soft enough, so you will not get hurt if this comes down around you, which is nice. And we have a lot of replacement parts, so we're okay.
Dr. Haynes?
Yes.
I was just talking to Trustee Fernandez. And is, is there any plan to integrate this program with, with our athletic programs?
I had not thought about that, but those are the great opportunities and things we can talk about. Yes. As in, taking video of football, for example?
Yes.
Football, I know the gym.
Nice. Well, that takes some, that sounds good. Very nice.
So I did ask Kalil before if there was a professional term for that, and he said, nope, just a flip. So, which seems to be the very exciting part of drone class lately.
That was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think one of the things we think about are, so we have drones that act as toys and things. But there are so many career paths from surveilling real estate, as many of you see those videos, to checking out the status of buildings and if they need repair in places that you couldn't normally get to. Disney now uses a lot of drones in their Galaxy's Edge area to run a lot of the special effects. And many of you have seen drone fireworks recently. So there are a lot of careers coming online where students like Kalil in eighth grade and up through ninth through 12th grade, once you get that drone certification, a lot of opportunities available to you. And sports too, as Dr. Martinez said. So thank you, Mrs. Feman, for that presentation. And that is the end of the superintendent report. Thank you.
Thank you. Some great emerging careers. Thank you. Other questions? I'd like to move on to the monitors report. Mr. Demikov?
Sure. The public had asked me to keep them updated on what the legal bills would be or are for the current litigation that's facing them. And I don't have any updated figures for September from our, our board council. The last figure that I have is $14,588.49. And when I get the, the report on the September billing, I'll certainly add that. And we'll update the public at the next meeting with whatever numbers I have. So that's basically it. I don't have any other thing to report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Demikov. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank several members of the community and their selfless actions to the district and the students of Ridgefield Park. We thank you for all you've done for the students. And I'd like to thank these three people, the Forio family in representation. Ashley Forio, if you could please come up to the microphone. Marie Forio. And Eva Kustonis, thank you so much for all you've done for our community.
President Givens, can you go ahead and articulate some of the, some of the things they did for our community?
All three of the ladies that we just spoke about tonight have fundraised for athletic programs, have beautified and maintained certain parts of our athletic areas. And they were all passed by the commissioners to do so. And we thank them so much for beautifying and helping our students be proud and be proud, proud Scarlets. And it's a perfect example for the Scarlets that we want to raise in our community. We thank you so much for your selfless acts. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Susan's comments on, oh, Trustee O'Neill, I'm sorry. Did you have your hand? Introduction to public comment.
Did you want me to read it again?
If, if you can, Trustee O'Neill.
Okay, let me just pull it up here. Didn't want to have music in the background, sorry. Just reiterating the update to our current policy. Again, we are realizing that the meetings were lasting a very long time, and many people were still not getting their questions answered. Out of respect to our community, staff, and board members, we discussed how we could make our meetings more effective and how we can make sure everyone's questions would be answered as soon as possible. Our goal in passing this policy tonight is to encourage the greatest amount of Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. In passing this policy is to encourage the greatest amount of participation from our community. Over the last few months, the committee has worked with our administration and attorney to create a policy that allows our meetings to be well-run, last a reasonable amount of time, and provide the public with a fair opportunity to speak. The administration asked that I remind you that the public comment period is not the only way to provide input to the board or its administration. Though we are absolutely not saying that input is not welcome at meetings. We want to make sure everyone gets a fair chance to share input and have their questions answered. We encourage you to email Dr. Haynes or the appropriate member of our administration with any questions or comments you have. Dr. Haynes has assured the board that the administration will share your comment with the board or answer your question to the best of its ability. In many cases, it would be more productive to email the district's administration with your questions so they have time to look into the issue rather than only raising it during the public comment period. We will continue to have two public comment periods, one for on-agenda items and one for non-agenda items. Number two, to keep the public comment period organized and running efficiently, we will be using a sign-in sheet for those interested in speaking. Please place your name on the sheet to speak. The sheet, the sign-in sheet will be located at the back of the room. When we call out your name, please come to the podium. At this time, the board also plans to allow members of the public to participate on Zoom during this school year. For those on Zoom who would like to make a comment, please use the hand-raising feature just before the public comment period if you would like to speak. A member of the district's administration will keep track of those who wish to speak, and the board will dedicate a set period of time to allow virtual attendees to make their comments during each public comment period. Finally, the public comment period for agenda items will be limited to one hour. Similarly, the public comment period for non-agenda items will be limited to one hour. We are confident that our one-hour period provides ample opportunity for comments while also ensuring our meetings run in a timely and productive fashion. As I mentioned, the politi, policy committee has been working hard on putting this together. We're proud of what we feel balances providing the public with fair opportunity to be heard while encouraging the greatest amount of participation for our community. A copy of this policy can be found on our website. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Trustee O'Neill. I just have a brief statement in response to litigation against the state. It's become to the board's attention that there, that there is an inaccurate belief in the community that the board will be filing a lawsuit against the state of New Jersey regarding the state monitor's appointment to our district. On behalf of the board, I want to clear that no such lawsuit has been initiated, nor does the board plan on filing any such lawsuit. While the board is not permitted to share the contents and details of its executive session meeting on October 4th, special meeting, it can advise the public that litigation against the state or fiscal monitor was not the reason, nor the topic of discussion in the executive session. The board understands that the state monitor has been assigned to our district and wishes to work with the state to ensure the district operates effectively and efficiently. However, we do not feel it is appropriate to share any communications we might have in the confidence had in confidence with the monitor. We will not be discussing this issue any further. Thank you for understanding that there are some limits to what we are legally permitted to share with the public. The board will not be responding to any questions on this topic. Thank you. I'd like to open up citizens' comments on agenda items. And I'd like to also reiterate, you could sign in with the sign-in sheet. That's either at the podium or at the front. I can't really tell at the moment. And again, a reminder, any slanderous or defaming comments could be liable for legal action. Thank you. I think we just over there as well. I've been informed. Thank you. We could start with Mr. Sadler, if you could state your name and address. I stated your name, but your address. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Jay Sean Sadler, 139 Overbeck Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening. So first, I would just like to thank the board and all district staff for the continued focus on the social justice resolution and bringing to fruition a lot of the, the goals therein. It's much appreciated, continues to be much needed. I'd also like to thank the board and the district staff for the continued focus on mental health, which is particularly important, especially in, in these times of, you know, the pandemic. So thank you all for, for your hard work in that regard. Much appreciated. I did have a question with regard to the COVID data that was shared by Nurse Aguilar. I did not hear the numbers of students. I noted Governor Murphy recently stated that there would be that schools would be, districts would be required to report not only to staff vaccination rates and incidences of COVID, but also students. So I just wanted to know if we had information for students.
Thank you.
We do not. We have not started collecting data for students at this time.
Okay. The other question I had was regarding, I see that there's a, there's a plan for emergency virtual remote instruction plan. So, you know, my own children were, were out sick for about four days. We kept them home. Unfortunately, they didn't have COVID or anything. But they missed a lot of instruction. And it would have been nice, you know, for them to have a COVID, excuse me, for them to have a remote option. Is that something that the district is working on for, for kids who are home and missing class?
So the remote and virtual plan is a requirement from the state of New Jersey, and it is specific to COVID and the pandemic. It requires us to provide a detailed plan on schedules and times and what happens should the entire district close down and everybody goes remote. I think your question is much more specific to individual students. When individual students need to go out because they have been exposed by COVID within our district, and they are responsible for an exposure in our school, we do allow those students to observe or tag along to the teacher in the classroom. If students are out sick for any other reason, we adjust our schedules, well, we adjust our practices similar to prior to COVID. So if a student is out because they have a cold or they traveled to another state where they were exposed somehow outside of the district, those students participate through Google Classroom. That's, that is our practice and policy.
Okay. Yeah, I would just say that if possible, given that we do have the technology and everything that we've learned coming out of the pandemic, you know, it would be helpful to have those options, especially since, I mean, in the past, I would have sent my, my children to school with the little colds that they had. But out of an abundance of caution, you know, I kept them home to keep everyone safe. And if we're asking parents to keep the kids home, it would be nice to have an option, you know, so that they can continue to get instruction if possible.
And Mr. Sadler, I respect the comment. As a parent myself, I understand and I sympathize with it. One of the issues the board has to deal with is if we go ahead and say, oh, it's okay if you're home and sick, just go ahead and tag along with everybody. It could present issues where many people take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Leslie Gottlieb? If you could please state your address as well.
464 A Liberty Street, Little Ferry.
Good evening.
Good evening. I noticed that you're creating a new administration, administrative position, Director of Assessments, Accountability, and Grant Management. I'd like to know some of the logic behind it, if you could share that.
Could, yeah, could you, I'm sorry, could you repeat the last part of the question?
It's Director of Assessments, Accountability, and Grant Management. It's a new administrative position. I'd like to know the logic behind that, if you're allowed to share it.
Sure. So this district is in receipt of a large amount of grants. And it's very unusual for any, any district in a 12- or 14-year period to receive so many grants. At this time, we have PESR 1, PESR 2, the ESEA grant that we typically get from last year, and there was carryover money. We have CHRIS, which is PESR 3. Soon we will have ARP. This district will be receiving $3.3 million in grants. In addition, ESEA, I just filed that last week. That gives us another $500,000. In total, the district is looking at about $6 million. And we have no personnel who is filing the ongoing grant paperwork, documentation. You actually heard a presentation tonight that talked about professional development, resources that we're adding, all of those expenses. It is an inordinate amount of paperwork for purchasing, tracking, reporting back to the state, and completing documents and paperwork. Additionally, the third goal that our district is looking at is universal pre-K. At this time, we have nobody who can apply to the state for a lot of money that they have available for a universal pre-K program in our district. That would be this position. This position would easily pay for itself if it allows us to offer universal pre-K in the next two to three years. That is the logistics behind this position.
Okay, and I wanted to compliment you on bringing back the shadowing from Little Ferry. My son, who is a 2020 graduate, he was able to take that when he was an eighth grader over in Little Ferry. I think he enjoyed the experience.
Thank you, ma'am. Ed DeSantis?
Good evening.
Good evening. Ed DeSantis, 15 Homesteads Place. It was very nice to see the presentation, by the way, tonight. The three presentations were very good. It's good to see we're going in these directions, and I have to applaud that we are. One thing I'd like to comment, though, if, I know when you share your screen, Dr. Hayes, it'd be good if we had a TV set facing the community too. You know, we really need You know, we really need, would be good to have that available.
We might be able to just move it flat.
Move it back or, you know, put it on wheels and have this gentleman shake it back and forth, whatever, whatever you got to do. The question I had on the policy that was, this is O'Neal read, was, I believe the last time it came up, it was a discussion about, this is a policy we're considering. I believe then, and this really is the first reading, even the policy wasn't read formally, this is really more like a first reading, and the board has to vote on that on the second reading, when it's changing a policy. I assume the ones in Resolutions 43, or well, most of them are all mandated. So.
Yes, sir, yes.
So essentially, it would be more appropriate to vote on that policy next meeting.
And just to state, we've followed legal counsel, and this is actually the second reading of the policy tonight.
And this is the first time was more of an explanation, but I'm not going to go back and forth about that. It'll pass this time, it'll pass next time. So the new position that's on the agenda. We're in a position in flux now. We have an acting superintendent. We have a whole, not a hole, but who's acting as Director of Curriculum. I'd like to know that this new position, yet another administrative position, is not being created for a short-term problem and with a long-term solution for it. You know, it's going to be an expensive position. It's another administrator's salary going out. We did make a lot of effort to keep our weight in the district not to be so administrative-heavy. And if there is going to be a, regardless, returned to Dr. Bender, new superintendent, then we will have a Director of Curriculum. I, at this point, I don't, I don't see the need for this. I'm not the professional, but I just like, I think if it's, if it's going to be a long-term solution for something we need, I don't want to say a short-term decision. I'd rather it not be made, that is going to affect, affect us long-term. The other thing on, I guess it's the funniest thing is busing overtime is $8,000 for the first month of September. That'll put us at $80,000 a year. Whatever's causing that, if it's need of people, or the program is organized the way it should be, but we should not have $8,000 a month and nothing plus of overtime. That's a big number. That's a big number. And if it was 12 months a year, it would be 100 grand. We would be out. And that's all I have to say on the chat there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. DeSantis?
15 Homestead Place.
Good evening.
P4, FP42. This policy, Mary O'Neal said that it was being read for discussion. Nothing about a first reading. She actually said there would be two readings after that before it became policy. That was the statement at last meeting. So you're either changing your rules again, or it's a lie, or whatever. FP51, why so many days? To description to. The school?
I'll answer that.
And why in the beginning of the year and not the end, where it would be more appropriate?
So these are small groups of students, and each of those students visit one of those days. So it's, it's small groups, the Little Ferry students who come over each one of those days, so small groups of students.
What's a small group?
I think, I think it's around eight. I wish Jamie Hasselberger were here. I believe it's around, around eight students who are shadowing a senior.
And why wouldn't you do it more, more towards, you know, April, May? Of course, not June, because that's, would be.
So. New to this situation, Mrs. DeSantis, we lose out of about 100 Little Ferry students in any graduating class. We gain about 65. We lose the rest. We don't have an opportunity to capture them and show them the great things that we do at this high school. This is an opportunity to front-load those eighth graders, show them all the great things that Scarlet's do, and hopefully attract them so they don't go to one of the 30 different academies that a lot of them are going off to attempt right now. This is a capture opportunity.
FP53. Why are we giving more money away instead of spending it on the children in the classroom? This is another $6,000 that went with the $18,000 over the summer. You know, you're quiveling about Chromebooks, but you know, you're giving spite and away like this tomorrow here.
As in the last meeting, I answered this one on the website. There's a very thorough answer up on the website to that question.
I can't hear you.
I can't speak louder.
There's a very thorough answer on the website to that question now.
FP54. I was looking at the job description, and I pulled up the Director of Curriculum and Operation and Instruction. And this is basically part of the Director of Curriculum's job. So now, what are we doing? We're taking part of his job away? And for how much money? To create a permanent position? And why? I guess you don't have an answer.
Can I just make a comment? Can I, can I just make a comment? Me, right here.
You have to ask Kim, not me.
Oh, can I make a comment? Am I allowed to speak? Okay, thank you. So I was looking at the job description, and one of the, I guess, one of the requirements or, yeah, one of the requirements is under grants, work with central office and build the administrative, write comprehensive needs assessment, gather data, information supporting documentation requires, submit funding, funding request and grant reports. And when I look at that and I think about New Jersey Sustainability, so when I looked at the description, I was under the assumption, assumption that this, this Director of Assessment Accountability and Grant Management would be securing, hopefully, and maintaining state certification. And that's something that is not in the job description of the Director of Curriculum, nor the superintendent or active superintendent. Like, we've never had anybody in district to, to obtain New Jersey Sustainability Certification. And at every single board meeting, you know, the public has come and said there's a need for additional liaison. If, so to my, is, is that one of the responsibility of the Director of Assessment and Accountability and Grant Management, obtaining New Jersey Certification, New Jersey Sustainability Certification, which comes with grants?
Thank you, trustee O'Neal.
Linda, this two pages is part of this job description, and that is the current admitted Director of Curriculum.
I understand what you're saying, so.
It's just another creation of another administrative position.
There are a lot of grants out there, and if we were a New Jersey Sustainability District certified, and our town is so, is silver certification, we do have green tea. If we are, then that opens the door to other possible grants. So is that, is securing and maintaining state certification part of the job qualification?
So it's, it is not written with that in mind, Mrs. Rodriguez. And I think we talked about this as part of the policy, because I'm very supportive of sustainable schools in New Jersey policy. The board, when we had our two retreats, was very specific on those three goals. Universal pre-K is a priority, and this job would spend a majority of its time making sure that we could see the funding, perform the feasibility studies, visit other districts to see what models are out there, and to get universal pre-K into this district, because the board agreed at that time that early childhood education from birth to age five was a priority, because right now, we have students who are advantaged and students who are disadvantaged, because they have opportunities or not. So this job, that's the priority first. It also looks at CTE. So you saw the drones and the certifications and the kind of associate's degrees that our students can get. This job works to enable and support those programs through additional funding and the social justice and social emotional issues you also heard, too. Those are the three top priorities of this job. I answered the first question about, as far as grant writing. So assessments, accountability and grant writing, those are the three containers, and they are specific containers. Assessments, because we are being Q-SACs this year, and we don't have a capacity on our current administration team for somebody to go ahead and make sure all of our Q-SAC documentation is in order. So that has a lot to do with the assessments. The Start Strong is new this year. The other formative assessments that we're doing this year, we haven't ever done before. This person is responsible for making sure those are up and running and successful. Accountability, that's assessments, accountability and grant management. Those are the three contained. But Mrs. Rodriguez, to your point, which is a good point, where does Sustainable Schools New Jersey come up? I would see this job, after being laser-focused on those three initiatives and getting this up and running, looking at activities, which I think I gave you a list of, such as a buildings and grounds initial assessment to gather a sense of what energy are we reusing? Do we use green chemicals? What are we recycling? Do we use any other kinds of alternative energy in our buildings or our plant management? We need a baseline status of where we are for Sustainable Schools New Jersey, and that will help us to figure out where we can go and what our status is. That's what I would propose, whether that's this job or something else in the district, I'm not sure, but that is an important discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Yates.
That's right, I want to add, too. That discussion continues tomorrow morning, when all of our administrators and our supervisors and Board of Education members, if they have availability, will attend the first breakout sessions of our district goals from nine o'clock to 10:30 tomorrow morning. And from those three separate teams, we'll come back and start forming leadership and actionable items, which I expect to report back on in the next couple of months.
Thank you. I apologize. Um, Dr. Martinez?
Yes. Mr. Santos, this, this position also raised alarms for me and for several other board members. You can hear me, how about now? Can you hear me now? This position raised red flags for myself and I think for several other board members, because this district used to be very, very top-heavy with, with inarguably poor results. And so when this position was proposed, I asked a lot of questions, as did Mrs. Rodriguez and several other people. I'm going to expect a lot from this position. We haven't used data the way we should in this district to determine how we train teachers, how we buy equipment in a very, very long time. We started doing that maybe a year ago, three years ago. And so I expect a lot from this position. I expected this position's going to have a positive impact, but I expect, within the power that I have as a board member for the time that I'm here, that this position be very effective in, in helping us use our data and our grants to improve instruction. And if it doesn't, you know, I know you'll hold us accountable, and if I'm here, I too will be holding us accountable.
Ricardo, I understand what you're saying, but this is, this is part of this.
Thank you. I think we answered your question. I know it took a long time to answer, and it's over time. If you have a few more brief comments.
I have one more question. And they were talking to each other during my time.
I'm sorry.
The other one is P96. What's the compensation for this position?
Yeah, the acting superintendent salary, is that what you're referring to? P96 was the appointment of the acting superintendent?
Contract renewal of Dr. Barry Haynes.
Yes, it's public knowledge, the acting superintendent salary.
How much is it?
We really, we'd have to get back to you if you ask a question online, I'm sure we're able to get back. It's also public knowledge as well.
Why would you be renewing this and asking for it to be renewed when you have a state monitor that has said numerous times at this point that he is not getting any cooperation from Dr. Haynes? He's being ignored, subverted, undermined. Why would you be renewing it? When the monitor is saying he's not getting any cooperation?
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. DeSantis. I'm sorry, we have to move on to the next speaker. Ten minutes. Thank you. Um, John Raftery? If you could please state your address. Thank you.
Thank you. I think what people are upset about with the new policy that we're discussing here as far as public participation. It's a reflection of the way the board seems to work. She was up here more than five minutes, but that fit your purpose as other people were talking, so we allowed it. She just asked you a question, and you said her time is up, because it didn't fit your criteria. So do you have a policy, or don't you?
And again, this is a public comment section.
Huh?
This is a public comment section.
Yes.
If we could answer simply, we have stated that we will. If we don't have the answers, at times you could go online and they could be answered as well.
I have asked two questions online, and I have not received an answer to them.
Look into them, Mr.
That was last Thursday.
Certainly look into that, Mr. Raftery.
Huh?
We'll certainly look into that, Mr. Raftery.
Hold, hold on, Mr. Raftery. Your questions are answered online. I can pull up the website and show you where they are, but they are answered.
I cannot understand you, I'm sorry.
The questions were answered on the website? If you'd like, we could pull them all. You know, we are taking your.
I'd like to know when they were answered.
They were answered in the last two days. I reached out to other people.
I don't see them. I haven't seen them.
Okay, so if you go on to today's date, if you click on the website and click on 10:13, I can pull them up in a second if you'd like to, but they are answered on the website.
Okay. Okay, very good. Dr. Haynes, I saw you and, oh no, that would be off agenda. I'm sorry. This is agenda, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So we're just going to leave it as you're going to answer what you want to answer, but you're not going to answer what we want to know.
I think I've been clear, sir, that we, if we, if it's an easy question to answer, and we can now, we will, and that's why that possibility of going online was developed so that more parents can answer, answer, be asked more questions. We actually broaden the scope of public speaking.
Has anybody complained to the board about not having enough time to speak or anything? That's what you just said to me, that people don't have enough time to speak.
Broadening the scope, so you have more opportunity to bring up any questions or comments. If it's not a simple answer, we can't answer them today. Thank you for your comments, sir. Going to close, oh, actually, I'm sorry, Ms. Lina Conant, do we have online questions? We have two. And also, please let us know if you're not able to hear us online. We just want to get everything right here, with the sound and Zoom virtually. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, ma'am. If you could please state your name and address? I think you're on mute as well.
She's muted.
I believe you're on mute, ma'am. If we have technical difficulties, we could go right back to this question and try again if, if it's an issue, we could take the second one and come back. Ma'am? We'll come back to you in a moment. I believe you're on mute. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Mrs. Malou? I believe you're on mute, ma'am.
Am I muted now?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Um, a few questions. First of all, 163 East Grand Ave. Um, looking at the, I agree that it's important to have a grant writer for, for the school district. But my concern is what happens, how long will these grants be in effect? And at what point are we going to have to then pick up the salaries within our budget? That's one concern I have with that. Um, as far as the overlap, well, maybe the smart thing would be to, as Berlinda said, make a piece of this position also have to do with sustainable schools where there are many other grants available. And, and that can just be an evolving thing, but if, if it's not in there as a part of his contractual or her contractual job, then I don't know that it can be put in at a later point without it costing us more money. Um, I totally agree with universal pre-K. However, where are we putting them? Will there be grant money available to expand the schools? And where would we even expand them? So, you know, it's great to think of brand new programs that we sorely need, but we got to be realistic too. So that's the one thing that concerns me where that's concerned. Where do we put them? Unless we start getting very creative, I, I don't see how that necessarily is going to be something we can accomplish without major money.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, Mrs.
Oh, I'm sorry, if, if you're continuing, it's hard to tell.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead, ma'am.
Um, and, and the other thing is, um, for P96, how long is that reaport- reappointment for? Is it for three months? Is it for the rest of the school year?
Uh, yes, ma'am, just a moment.
The reappointment for the acting superintendent is in three-month increments. It has to be approved by the Commissioner of Education after the first three months. And then the second three months, it must be reapproved by the Commissioner of Education. So it's a three-month appointment.
Okay, thank you. And, um, okay, I think I've been scribbling notes here.
And I believe Dr. Haynes is going to answer the other part of the question you had, Mrs. Malou.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry, he's looking.
Thank you. I, I think the interesting thing is, as we've tossed around the idea of universal pre-K is that there is, uh, there's been some missing understanding in the community that we'd have to have capacity in our schools to have universal pre-K. And there are many other models out there that don't call upon our school buildings to house early childhood education. So the examples that I've shared with the small committee so far are Princeton, which is actually a very socio-economically diverse town, and that's where Judy Wilson comes from, who will be with us tomorrow morning again. Their universal pre-K is in conjunction with community partnerships. So where there are pre-K programs existing, the school district partners with those programs. They provide professional development for the teachers. They supply the resources because of the state grants and the money that are given to the school district. They use those resources to train, to pay salaries, to provide in collaboration with community resources, universal pre-K. Morristown is another one that does that. I heard Beto receive the grant, which frustrates me because I feel Ridgefield Park should get that grant to go ahead and partner with community resources. So using our own buildings is, is one model. But this subcommittee of early childhood education would, one, do a feasibility study. Maybe we do have capacity. Maybe there are other places in the district. Maybe there are community resources. I don't know those answers. And that's what this committee is set for. And then to go after the state grant funds and to come up with a plan of how we can make it happen.
Okay, so questioning with that to keep in mind, we have a lot of children that are already in pre-K programs. And I'm actually glad to see Beto was able to get it because I know my daughter went to Trinity Lutheran at that age. I didn't have her in town. We really didn't have much in town outside of the co-op. But what about the children that aren't, whose parents can't afford to put them in any of these programs? Will this address that?
Yes, that's why this community needs it. That's what I'm hearing screaming from our board members, that it should be universal free pre-K. That is the goal. And that's why we're doing a feasibility study. And that's what this committee will be working on. Janet, that is the goal, is what I have to say.
Okay. I look forward to hearing more on that. I'll be back later on off agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. We had one other before, is it? Um, well, I think we only have one more. Do we have one more online? We'll, we'll take the both, absolutely. We'll complete public comment on agenda items after these two Zoom members of the public. And if we still have the timer as well, it'd be appreciated. No problem. If we could just have a moment, Ms. Raftery, just one moment, we'll be right with you. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Raftery.
Good evening, Ingrid Raftery, 54 Euclid.
Good evening.
Question. Now, I heard Dr. Haynes mentioning free universal preschool. Okay. You know, I'm not really against any of that. There are children in Ridgefield Park and neighboring areas that need that. But in all fairness, whenever I hear the word free, I would like to know where does this money come from? There's nothing for free. Can you explain that to me or the members?
Yep. Yeah, we're looking to get a grant, ma'am, so it would be state-funded. It would be, you know, a grant that would be non, we wouldn't have to pay it back. And it would be free universal pre-K if the feasibility study comes back. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
If we have one more, we'll close public comment on agenda items after this comment.
Hello?
Good evening.
Nicole Kachadorian, 208 Fifth Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have a question about a policy, comprehensive health and physical education, E2422. I am wondering about several items that are listed under comprehensive health and physical education, particularly numbers 17 and 24.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you please repeat the personnel agenda attachment number?
Sure. It's, uh, it was actually policy number 2422 under comprehensive health and physical education. Your FP43.
Thank you, ma'am.
Items number 17, 24. How are they included in this category?
Mrs. Kachadorian, I would have to look that up and get back to you.
Okay, it's the history of disabled and LGBT persons. That item. Instruction of political, economic and social contributions, et cetera, et cetera. And 24 infusion of African-American accomplishments into school curricula requires in the curriculum for all elementary and secondary students that infuses into all courses on the United States, the centuries of accomplishments by African-Americans in the building and development of America. I'm just wondering how, part of me, how that fits under health and physical education. There are others.
Understood. I'll look up an answer for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bye-bye.
To close, citizens' comments on agenda items, if there's anyone left over online, you can always reach out and ask that question on our tab on the internet. So motion to close citizen comments on agenda items. Trustee Cathcart? Second trustee, Verselli? Thank you. All in favor? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our resolutions portion of the agenda. Trustee Rodriguez, if you could please begin with faculty and programs.
I have a comment about FP51. I'm so glad to see that on tonight's agenda. There is a need for having the eighth graders come to Little Ferry and be a scarlet for the day. Tonight, you know, comment was made that, you know, there is a need for this because we're losing students from Little Ferry to the academies. But I also want to say that we are also losing students, children that live in Ridgefield Park. We're losing them to the academies. We're also losing students that start off here in Ridgefield Park. Either transfer, family move, or some students also, you know, leave and they go to early colleges. So hopefully, there is a plan so we can keep, not only keep the 100 Little Ferry students that go to the academies, but also keep the Ridgefield Park students that live in Ridgefield Park.
I think, thank you, trustee. I, I think a part of that is all of the great programs that we saw today and, you know, hopefully the, the community.
To continue that. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. If you could please move.
Sure. I so move FP35 through F, there's a lot.
Yes. Second trustee, Gomes? Thank. OTAs, yes. Thank you, trustee Theman. Thank you. Yes. It should be TAs, teachers assistants. Under Lincoln School. Thank you.
Are there any questions on FP35 to FP57?
Yes, I have a comment on FP54. I, I just wanted to circle back to a question that Mr. Santos had and answer a little more thoroughly. And it's also related to what Berlinda said about us losing students that are Ridgefield Park residents and losing them outside of the district. There's a lot of reasons we lose those students. And one of them is, is the achievement gap. You know, our, when people look up, when people Google, when people Xylo, I always say Zillow, but I'm corrected. When people Xylo the district, they look up the district scores. And, and, and when they live across the country or they live across the river, what they're looking at is the district scores. And our scores have not been anything to brag about for a long, long time. I, I fully expect that this position, of course, it's not going to happen overnight. But, you know, in my opinion, this position better address some of that. The, the excuses that we've made in this district for poor achievement. We now have a director of curriculum. We have brand-new principals. We have tons of, we spent millions of dollars on equipment and curriculum and books and all these things. And our, our test scores need to go up, otherwise we on the board are responsible.
I, uh, and Dr. Martinez is going to add a little bit, just a little bit to that. So achievement gap recently has been relabeled opportunity gap. And that goes back to opportunities of early childhood education, which lead to better opportunities and achievement of our, of our early childhood education. And those in the formative years that really are a great predictor and determinant of how our students will achieve and succeed and go on to careers. So.
Yes, I appreciate that, but, but we've also had an accountability gap. And we've had, you know, many, many gaps besides that. I think that, that helps from the ground up. But, you know, we, we've been using books here that were decades old and we've had low accountability from the top down. And I include myself as a community member and as a board member.
Thank you, trustee Martinez. I believe we're ready to move faculty programs as well. Yes, please. Thank you.
We have, first is.
Yes. Trustee Gomes.
And Mr. Gomes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes? Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Phytros?
Yes.
Dr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Theman? Mr. Verselli? Mr. Cathcart? And President Gibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbons, if I might interject.
Yes.
First of all, I am overturning the board's approval of FP54. We are not adding additional reoccurring costs at this time. We are not going to add additional administration at this time. And if the board wants to consider this in the next budget, that would be the time to do it. In addition, as far as FP53 is concerned, I'm also overturning the board's approval of that. I have a number of questions on that, which I have not had answered. So it's being overturned today. And when I get the information that I, I would like, then it may come back for a vote at the next board meeting. So those two resolutions, Mrs. Grabstein, have been overturned and they're not approved by the, by the state monitor. That's FP54 and FP53.
Oh, noted. Thank you, Mrs.. Oh, noted. Thank you, Mr. Santos.
Trustee Cathcart, if you could please move buildings and grounds.
Are there any questions on BG eight to BG nine? Seeing none, Mr. Cathcart, Mr. Verselli. Mr. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Phytros.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes. Dr. Martinez. Mrs. O'Neill.
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Thiemann.
Yes.
And President Gibbons.
Yes. If we could please move on to finance, trustee Fernandez. Oh, I'm sorry.
There's one we'll be withdrawing FI one oh five. And I also wanted to mention that there was a typo in the attachment on the check register. It should read FI ninety-seven and the attachment reads FI ninety-eight.
Okay, is everyone clear? Trustee Fernandez.
Yeah, of course. Finance, insurance, I'd like to move FI ninety-four to one oh four. One oh five has been removed. And then FI one oh six to FI, uh, one fourteen. I still move.
Are there any questions on those resolutions? Seeing none, Mr. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Thiemann.
Yes.
Mr. Phytros.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes.
Yes.
Dr. Martinez. Mrs. O'Neill.
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
Yes, to all, but, um, an abstention on FI ninety-seven.
Mr. Verselli. Mr. Cathcart. And President Gibbons.
Yes. Thank you. Trustee Thiemann, if you could please move personnel.
Are there any questions on P eighty to P one oh four? See, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, one oh five. Seeing none, Mr. Thiemann. Mr. Cathcart, Mr. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Phytros.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes. Dr. Martinez. Mrs. O'Neill.
Yes.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Verselli. And President Gibbons.
Yes. And we have CR seven.
I second.
Thank you. Trustee Cathcart and trustee Rodriguez.
Are there any questions on CR seven? Seeing none, Mr. Cathcart. Mrs. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Phytros.
Yes.
Mr. Gomes. Dr. Martinez. Mrs. O'Neill.
Yes.
Mr. Verselli. Mr. Thiemann.
Yes. That concludes our resolutions portion of the agenda. Are we ready for citizens' comments off agenda items or do we need a second to set everything? And again, we have a sign-in sheet. Um, we're going to move on to citizens' comments off agenda items. Please be respectful to others and stick to the five-minute time because we have others to speak as well as people online that have to get their questions out as well. Thank you. Thank you so much. Just be a moment here. Mr. Sadler. We need.
Name and address again?
Um, I have it here, one thirty-nine over back avenue. It's just a formality.
Yes.
Do you need a moment?
She told me that I, that I had to.
It does.
Jay Sean Sadler, one thirty-nine over back avenue.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, so good evening again.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah. Good evening again. Uh, so I just wanted to come up and speak to my experience of, as, as a parent here in this district, uh, with regard in particular to the, uh, we've been talking about the public participation in, uh, board meetings. Uh, so I, I wanted to say first that districts, you know, staff, the administrators, teachers have been amazing with regard to communication. Throughout the, the course of time that, you know, my children have been in school here, teachers have always been responsive, administrators have always been responsive. I've never had any issue and I'm grateful for that. Unfortunately, I can't say the same with regard to the board, right? And, um, so one of the things I wanted to, uh, ask is for, for you, President Gibbons, uh, do you recall at any point receiving, uh, email correspondence from me over the past several months?
I would have to look into my emails, um, Mr. Sadler. I do get a lot of emails and I answer many of them as well.
Okay, so you.
The ones I can answer.
Sure. So over the past about four months, I've sent five emails to the board. And, uh, do you recall ever answering any of my emails, Mr. Gibbons?
Mr. Sadler, I, I again, want to say the same thing I did. I would have to open up my emails and I don't want to take your time.
So yes, the answer is no. The answer is an unequivocal no. You have not answered any of my emails. Which is completely unacceptable, right? So where we come here and we're told that we can have our questions answered, right? I've stood here and I've asked questions of yourself, of other folks like trustee Cathcart, when he, you know, uh, gave medical misinformation regarding COVID and said that children don't transmit the disease. You know, I asked questions and the questions were not answered. This is something that's just not deniable, right? I think that I certainly am a fallible human being that has made many mistakes over the course of my lifetime. I'm telling you that this is a fact, right? And what I'm asking is, is that something that you, Mr. Cathcart as well, would be willing to take responsibility and make a positive change forward, you know? Because I, as a, I, as a, as a parent, as, as a member of this community, have tried to communicate with you and have not been able to get answers far too many times.
I'll answer the question. It's been the practice of this board in the previous administration that all questions should be directed to the superintendent of schools.
That's, that's.
Let me finish. I didn't.
Sure. I apologize. Sure.
So, and that you should be following a chain of command. It's not proper for board members be answering your questions when they should be directed to the board superintendent.
Okay, so.
And that's called chain of command. And that's been the practice all through this district. So that's why I don't answer them because you got to go through the chain of command.
Okay, and I'll second that. A chain of command is teacher, principal, administrator, and then the superintendent as well.
Okay, so actually, uh, to respond to you, trustee Cathcart, uh, you said to me directly that you would provide two sources that you stated, uh, of, 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 uh, proof that you had that children do not transmit COVID. Can you please hold, hold my time, please, as he's answering? So this is precisely what I'm saying, right? This is just a matter of blatant disrespect.
We don't want to take your time, sir.
Right, but. So you can, so you're saying you're not going to answer the question? Okay, and you're not going to answer my email either? Okay, so once again, I hope that the community who's listening can see it's just blatant disrespect. And when you see the community angry, this is why we're angry. We're not, uh, people who want to be adversarial. But when you have to deal with disrespectful folks like this gentleman here, it's very, very difficult. When you have to deal with a, a person, a trustee such as Mr. Gibbons, who promises to answer a question and, and demands that we follow the rules, but he himself does not follow the rules, it's, it's very frustrating for any community to deal with something like that. Do you have anything to say, Mr. Gibbons?
No, I, I just want to thank you for your comments. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
DeSantis?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Your policy to stop public comment. First of all, one hour gives twelve people time to speak. So you're cutting off public comment after twelve people speak. Numerous times, including tonight, there were people with their hands raised online and you didn't respond to them.
We answered everyone online, ma'am.
Excuse me?
We answered everyone online and gave more.
No, actually, you didn't. And she'll tell you offline. Bob and Dave both know that at eleven o'clock, you're supposed to call for a thirty-minute extension. And you're supposed to do that every thirty minutes. Of course, you could use it to cut public comment off, but you, um, it's not what it was put in for, but you know, that, that could serve a purpose too. One shot up here, when sometimes you say, oh, I forgot to ask this, or somebody says something and it just brings up a really good question or a really good comment, you're denying the public that. And as far as the late hour goes, nobody wants to be here late, but it's the board that's causing the community to be here late. Because of what you're not doing, you're fighting a different battle than we're fighting. We're fighting for the education of the kids and the running of the schools. And you're fighting for a certain group's control over this district. The staff and anybody can view meetings online. I open them and I put them up. There's also a twenty-four-hour unwritten rule in this district that has been here forever. And that's if a question can't be answered here, it's answered within twenty-four hours.
You said unwritten rule, ma'am?
It's an unwritten rule. And it's every administrator, every teacher, everybody that works in this district, if they're asked by a parent or a community member a question, those answers are given within twenty-four hours. Now, I sent questions, um, first I sent them to Mr. Demikov because I didn't get any answers here. And he didn't answer and told me to send them to Dr. Haynes. I sent those questions and they were questions that were from previous board meetings. It took seven days to get even a response. And then it was weeks of back and forth on how was he, he was going to answer me by the board meeting. I specifically asked to be responded to in email or at the board meeting in public and was told I was going to be answered by the board meeting, including the day of the board meeting. I got an email saying the same thing. One question was responded to, and that was the fact that the doors were locked in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act. That's the only question that was answered over weeks of back and forth. Then I come here. My questions hadn't been answered. I asked them again. And I'm treated like, well, they were answered on the, on the, uh, website. Well, no, they weren't. They certainly weren't at one o'clock that afternoon. So it's, it's supposed to make me look like I'm not doing something or to embarrass me in some way. I'm not writing questions that can be answered here. And anything on agenda should be able to be answered at the meeting. How many students have been quarantined per week since the beginning of school? I asked this at the last meeting. How many students were athletes? And how many teachers?
We're not sure if that could be answered because of HERPA. Um, there's, there's a medical, you know, we're not sure.
No, it's not medical to give me an answer on how many students district-wide.
I'm sorry, that's. We don't have that number at the moment, ma'am.
That's not true.
I do not have it in front of me, uh, Mrs.
Okay, I'll, I'll get the information. I'll come back to you next time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ed DeSantis?
Ed DeSantis, still living at Fifteen Homestead Place. Something I want to address before the two comments I wanted to make. Number one, the, the public address is the board president. And usually in many cases, the superintendent or the BA says, I'll take that question. But everybody addresses the board president, not necessarily the, the acting superintendent. And the board now has never given advice as to any medical issues ever, whether something was contagious or not, was inappropriate. I just want to state the fact, I know you're not going to apologize for it, but you never do. But that's okay. Let's get past that. The, the two things I wanted to, excuse me.
In the back of the room, excuse me.
I'm sorry. Um, please let Mr. DeSantis speak.
The two things I wanted to say. Number one, um, I am pleased that we were having more of a discussion now with the public. I think the policy has a way to go. I think that when people are angry or people have questions or they're not secure in things, you have to let them vent. You may not like what they say. I know from personal experience, but you have to let them vent. And that's the only way you're going to come to a point of peace in the district between the board and the community is communication. It's important. Way more important than maybe in your, in your time, you realize yet, and that's not meant to be an insult. That's just the reality. Learn it the hard way, learn it the long way. The other thing I wanted to say, although I did compliment the board and this acting superintendent on the achievements we're having right now, I would be terribly remiss if I didn't thank Superintendent Dr. Bender for initializing most of these issues, many of them. And, and, and appreciate so much too. Uh, and that's not saying anything negative this way. It's just acknowledging her for a tremendous job. Uh, the last thing, uh, actually I want to say is, and I'll be quick. That's, uh, that, that doesn't happen all the time, but I, I see Mr. Phytros is on the, on the screen right now. that's, uh, that, that doesn't happen all the time, but I, I see Mr. Phytros is on the, on the screen right now, uh, which is good. I know so many times it's a black screen, and I do think that, you know, the public comes here and they speak. I think, you know, in all cases, unless you have, you're ill or there's COVID, that you should be present at a board meeting, and if you're gonna be remote, then it certainly should be on, on a visual camera. Um, you know, so many times that there's, there's silence, not there, people are texting on the board, and if there's board discussion going on, it does leave the community very secure that the public, the discussion among the board isn't happening on the cell phones. So, uh, I would hope that that doesn't happen anymore. And I hope we can move forward with this, uh, type of discussion. May not be answering all the questions yet, but it's an improvement, but a ways to go. Um, and, uh, I think that's it. Uh, thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Jennifer Schmidt?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm here to vent. Sort of, sort of, okay.
Welcome everyone's comments.
Um, so I've seen my address, 138 Fifth Street. Um, so tonight I want to start on a positive note. I want to thank all the members of the Board of Ed for their time and dedication to our district and our children, and especially thank those members that in the past several months have taken the time to personally respond to my emails, many of which do not require a response. Um, so Mr. Martinez, Ms. O'Neill, Mr. Fernandez, Dr. Haynes, and President Gibbons, I thank you for your thoughtful and prompt responses to my emails. I'd also like to publicly thank, they respond to some people, I guess. Um, I'd also like to publicly thank my daughter's kindergarten teacher, Ms. Kapazie, and aides Mr. Teal and Ms. Suede for the amazing academic progress I've seen in my daughter since the start of the school year. Seeing her progress, progress has made such a joy for, and a relief for our family, so I can't say thank you enough for that. And last and certainly not least, I want to thank the parents of the students in my daughter's class. Although I only get to see Reagan and her classmates interact for a few minutes each day at drop-off, it is the highlight of my day. And I've never seen a group of young children more friendly, welcoming, and loving towards one another. And I think adults could really learn a lot from them. Now to address a couple of the answers, or lack thereof, to the questions I asked last month. Question number one, when does the mask mandate end? The answer, it doesn't. Not until it's been thoroughly used and abused to force parents into giving their child a COVID shot. It doesn't end when the vaccine becomes available to more children, as is evident by the fact the high school is still mandated to wear them. As you all know by now, I like to look at actual plotted data to gauge how we are managing COVID-19. So here is a bar graph plotting COVID and other illnesses and disease, cancer, heart disease, and the flu over the course of the pandemic. As you can see, in April of 2020, evident, evident huge problem we had. Here we are now. And COVID is well under heart disease and cancer, just a little bit over the flu. Our county is also almost 70% fully vaccinated today. So here's a rhetorical question for everyone listening. If it's not safe yet to stop mandating masks on children and teachers, when is it? It seems it's already deemed safe for politicians to have large indoor gatherings to get their party on, and it's safe to crowd football stadiums maskless, whether vaccinated or not. I just hope that parents and teachers and the Board of Ed members are understanding that our governor has no end game, at least not one based on logic or science, as is evident by his remarks during the debate last night. In response to a question he was asked about why the rules change, he essentially said the rules change along with the CDC guidelines. Notice he didn't say it changes as our risk level changes or the number of people vaccinated increases. I'd be curious to know what changed that prompted him to issue a daycare baby mask mandate. He also said we could be more flexible where and when we can be, but he didn't elaborate on when that is. He can't tell you when it will end because the motive is politically driven. It will come down to forcing the COVID shot on all. You don't have to be anti-vax to be anti-mandate, and I think many parents are starting to see the forest for the trees and seeing what the future holds. I hope those that can see it strongly consider what kind of precedent these mandates set and think about the future of our children on November 2nd when they go to the polls. I'd also like to pose the question, if 80% of the students are fine wearing a mask, do the other 20% not matter? I find it dishonest and irresponsible of the American Academy of Pediatrics to put out a statement that there are no significant health risks in children from constant mask-wearing. I guess those who struggle with mental and emotional problems are not significant, and mental and emotional development are not critical to a child's overall health. There are numerous studies that have been conducted that have found that when children can't read expressions, they are more likely to have peer problems and learning difficulties. And preschoolers are more likely to show external behavior problems and acts of overt aggression. On the flip side, those that are better at reading expressions have been statistically proven to achieve more popularity and perform better academically. But I guess those studies are all insignificant. The governor even acknowledged a significant increase in mental health goals over the course of the pandemic, but his solution? A website, a political response, more government aid to the rescue. He caused the problem and he's got a solution. I can't help but question why we are so accepting of a cure worse than the current disease and why there isn't more talk of better alternatives. I do, however, appreciate Mr. Gibbons' efforts researching alternatives like air purifiers for all the classrooms that can kill over 99% of COVID germs among other viruses. This is a time to be more innovative and offer more options, not a time to force people to cover their faces or inject themselves with something that they aren't comfortable with. I hope this board, when given the opportunity, will use their common sense and remember the facts when the ball is put back in their court. I also ask that the board press the governor for more definitive answers. As parents, we have a right to know if a vaccine mandate for our kids is on the horizon so that we can plan accordingly. Lastly, one of my questions that has not been answered is whether any of our schools are part of the 758 New Jersey schools signed up to take part in regular testing of asymptomatic K through 12 students and staff for COVID and reporting it back to the Health Department in exchange for funds. So I would appreciate an answer to that question. And I can see now, only five minutes before the meeting, that my other questions had been answered. Um, and the answer to my first question only reiterated everything that I just said, and I have a lot more to say about those, but I'm sure I'm out of time.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt, and thank you for your informational emails on air purifiers and everything, every side of, of this that we have to look at. So we're really appreciated, and thank you for your comments.
And does anyone have, um, does Dr. Haynes have an answer to that last question about the list of the 758 New Jersey schools? Are we signed up?
We are signed up for the testing program in New Jersey. I have to look at the specific 758. I don't know what that refers to.
Yeah, I don't know the name of the program. It's just asymptomatic, very clearly asymptomatic, K through 12. Volun- voluntarily, parents are gonna volunteer their kids, I guess, for testing to gauge, in exchange for money. Yep.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Schmidt. If we could have, uh, Wesley Gottlieb, please?
Good evening. Or on the gym floor, and I saw there was something written on the website about the gym floor that they didn't have a date yet. Will they be able to have winter sports? And what are the kids doing now for gym? And lastly, can anyone elaborate on what they were talking about, about commemorating people on the gym?
Um, the specifics, we absolutely will have with their sports. Um, the specific date, uh, where it's gonna be done, um, it was supposed to be before school, like I pushed back, and I, I believe it's supposed to be finished. Um, any day now. Yeah, thank you very much, Mrs. Grabstein. I don't want to give wrong information.
I did talk to the architect this afternoon, and, um, they're actually waiting for some rubber, um, threshold that it will prevent, um, people from tripping and will also protect the floor. They're also waiting for the emergency lighting to come in, and unfortunately, it's just a problem with delivery at this point, so we're just waiting, um, for that to come in.
Do they have any plans if we don't get it in time for winter sports?
Um, that I don't know. I think the, the rubber part of the, um, the threshold is a trip factor, and it could be a safety concern, so I don't know exactly what the plans will be, but I'm hoping that it will be in soon.
And what are we doing for gym as it gets colder?
That might be more of a question for Dr. Haynes.
Dr. Haynes?
The, the last portion, if you could just repeat for me?
What are they doing for gym as it gets colder?
During, uh, gym right now, what are we doing for, for, for phys ed, physical education? We have students separated now. Um, there's use of classrooms for different students with driver's ed and health. Um, there's a lot of outside time now. Uh, we have had some rain here and there. We've, we've been pretty lucky, uh, where we've seen, uh, phys ed being carried out outside, on the track, on the turf field, uh, we've seen students, so they're utilizing the field as much as possible. And also to, um, to, to say again, we, we're gonna have an archery program, um, that was approved to come in soon. So that's gonna be another great thing that students could be involved in as well.
And the commemoration stuff is still being worked on, right?
I was gonna... Yes, ma'am.
All right, thanks.
We want to make sure we honor everyone appropriately. Thank you for your comments. Christina Ramos? I believe we have someone online as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to, actually I had that same question, um, but as we head into the cold season, um, do we have any other alternative plans of doing things indoors as it's, you know, getting cold pretty quick for gym? Like, when, when is the project gonna be completed? Do we have like an estimated time of completion at this time?
I mean, it's, it's basically done. The flooring is in. It's just a matter of waiting for this particular, um...
Safety lights, I believe.
...piece that has not come in yet, so we're hoping that it'll be very soon.
So there's no like timeframe of when it's...
Trying to get that information from the contractor, but I don't have a definitive date.
Do we have like a plan moving forward just as the cold weather approaches?
The, the gym floor will be done soon, um, and when the cold weather approaches, we'll be able to be indoors, as far as I know.
Okay. Um, I just also wanted to, um, give kudos. Um, I just received this email, I think today or yesterday. Um, sometimes I don't know where, what they are. I read these emails. But for the Honor Society extra help classes that are being provided, I think that's a very good thing for the students who may be falling behind or need some extra help. I also want to give kudos to the principals, Ms. Cavan from the high school, Ms. Diane Beaman. I think that they've been making great connections with the children that I haven't seen previously, in previous years. Um, and I think each student needs at some point or another that connection. And I've been seeing that, I've been noticing that, you know, by speaking to my children about that. Um, as far as the construction in the auditorium, um, I had asked the question. It was answered today, but not really answered. Um, you asked which auditorium? We only have one auditorium in the school, so it'll be here. So I wanted to know when the completion of that work is gonna be done, because when I was here for after schoo-, um, back-to-school night, I noticed that the, uh, auditorium was sectioned off into small spaces. And I asked the chorus teacher how many children are in our class, and he said about 30, which I think is a lot, especially in the auditorium, well, it's not very well ventilated. Um, so I'd like to know when that completion of the auditorium project?
I, I can look into that for you, and I will get back to you on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Grabstein.
And, uh, also just wondering now with all to talk about the new position that was, that you tried to set, uh, put, set forth for the new, uh, administrat-, administration position. For, how do you, how are you faring with your position now as Director of Curriculum and having to sit in as acting superintendent? How are you faring doing both jobs?
I've shared that answer with, I believe it was the Faculty and Programs Committee, and so, uh, the board and I are working on that.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I shared that information with the Faculty and Programs Committee of the board, and the board and I are working on that.
I didn't understand your response, sorry.
The, the board is, is working on it, and it was discussed with faculty and programs.
Oh. Well, my question was, how are, how do you feel doing both jobs at this time? Because as you mentioned earlier, it's a lot of work to write for grants and ask, you know, reach out to the state and follow-ups and all. So I know you've been doing that now, and you've been also, you've been doing two positions, so I want to know how you feel and how you've been handling...
I have no comment at this time.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to reiterate, we have a, a massive amount of grants, which is great for our community. Um, that's gonna conclude public comments on agenda items in person, and we're, we're gonna now move on to citizens' comments. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna answer from, you know, the background. We're gonna take our online comments first. If there's time, uh, we will take, um, other comments as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Icon. And I'll, I'll keep the, um, the list going here with our online speakers as well. Could you just give us a moment? Ready? Okay, um, I didn't know if the time, you'll start a timer when they start. Thank you. Um, good evening. If you could please state your name and address, so I could put it on the, the ledger.
Sure. Elaine Marin, 77th Street.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I had my hand raised prior, so I guess this is kind of connected to on-agenda items. Mr. Demikov, this is actually a question that you might be able to help me with. So I was wondering, you know, I, I respect not hiring any more administrators in a district that is very heavy on administrators and has been, but is there a possibility that the curriculum director position, um, could be filled?
Are you saying that the, the position is open now?
Well, not that it's open. Is there an opportunity to hire somebody to do that? Because that is probably one of the most important positions. Um, and I just cannot fathom how one person can do that as well as the superintendent position, especially in a district that definitely was lacking in curriculum and resources for a very, very long time.
That's why the, the position of Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Operations was created back with Dr. Bender. So that position is there, and that's filled by Dr. Haynes. So...
So he will be doing these two positions for...
He is getting paid for that position.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Thank you for your question, Ms. Marin.
Okay, I had two additional, Vanessa. Sorry. I had two additional, um, questions that kind of came about, um, after Mr. Sadler had spoken. Um, so he had referenced emails, and I was just wondering why does the board have personal email addresses if it's not procedure or protocol or past practice to respond? Because I'll say that I've never gotten a response from many of the board members, including you, to any of my emails. Um, and even to an email that I sent you prior to COVID, um, when I ran a program called Better Than Broadway out of Lincoln with 100 students, and I invited each and every one of you to that particular event. And the only, um, two trustees that responded and attended were Mrs. O'Neill and Mrs. Kraft at that time. So I'm just wondering, what is the purpose then for these emails? Do we have an answer for that? Because that was something new. That, that was not always the case. Personal emails were not, um, a practice years ago, started attending. And then, you know, it was an attempt to be more engaged and informed, and the board was given their own personal RP schools emails, but I've never gotten any responses to mine. I haven't really gotten any acknowledgements other than... I haven't really gotten any acknowledgements other than Dr. Martinez.
Oh, I'm sorry. Addresses are, you know, for board communications. They are board emails. You know, and and.
I don't know, communication seems like it's a more of a two-way street.
I thought, I'm sorry, Ms. Marin, but the public, you know, does have. They have to follow the chain of command, which is teacher to principal to superintendent.
My things have not been teacher-related. I've never gone to you about teacher-related items. I I understand protocol. As a teacher, I understand protocol. I've never, never emailed you about anything that was teacher-related. It's always been board-related. And I've never even gotten a thank you for your your email. We appreciate your time. I understand chain of command. I understand teacher, principal, all of that, and I have had, I have a great relationship with Dr. Farrar. I go to him with compliments, with questions. So I'm not buying that. My next, I guess, comment. Is about the, excuse me?
Just to let you know, you have a minute left. We.
Sure, sure. This will be quick. My my next thing is something to consider about the Zoom and absences. I've had a situation with both my girls in the last two weeks where, you know, they had sore throats. And I took them to City MD, and I I thought I was being a very responsible parent, and they got COVID tested, and they were both negative. And my daughter, the symptoms lingered, and the City MD doctor gave me a note that said she could not return to school for five days. And I respected that, and I didn't press it. I didn't even email, but she missed a lot of school. And she came back to her honors classes on Monday, and she had tests and quizzes, and she had a lot of work to to make up. So I'd like you to just consider that too, that the protocols are changing, that doctors are being more cautious. They're telling parents, please don't send your child in, just to err on the side of caution. Even if it is a cold or something like that, we don't want that around the school either. So just like I said, something to consider, maybe three to five days if they're out, there could be some kind of adjustment. Because like I said, I was trying to be a responsible parent, but my daughter definitely suffered, especially my older one who was out longer. And she just came back, and like I said, she was given all the classwork, and she was given quizzes and tests, and I think she would have fared better had she been part of, even just as an observer in the class.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Thank you.
Chris, can I make?
Yes, absolutely, Dr. Martinez.
You know, you guys who sat on a committee with me know that it takes a lot of self-restraint for me to not be talking up here. Those of you who have been on a committee with me know that it takes a lot of self-restraint for me to not speak at these board meetings. But I'd like to see if Carrie could clarify for the public what individual board members are allowed to speak about? What emails we're allowed to answer and what emails we're not allowed to answer, in just some general sense? Because we are, as individual board members, greatly handcuffed, but we're not totally muffled.
Yes, and I and I'll let Mrs. Wright speak about that, but I know we're not allowed to speak to the public at times. We can listen, and that goes for anyone.
So the Board of Education members are limited in their communications with the public. You don't lose as a board member your right to communicate as a parent or as a resident, as a citizen. But if individuals from the community are presenting you with issues that are board-related, only the board president or the superintendent is permitted to speak on behalf of the board. So oftentimes, this does limit your ability to respond to communications, even when they don't seem like they may violate the chain of command. So out of an abundance of caution, board members should share any emails they get with the board president and the superintendent. And you should be cautious when responding. That doesn't mean that you can't respond to the member of the public and tell them that you've received their email. And that you will forward it to the appropriate person to respond, so that the community knows that you've got it and something is being done with it. But you do need to be careful as board members that you are not speaking on behalf of the board. But you also have an ethical obligation to ensure that anything that even sounds remotely like it could possibly be. A complaint or an issue must be forwarded to the superintendent, and board members are not permitted to delve into those. So I hope that that provides some guidance to you, Dr. Martinez.
For your comments. If if we could elevate the next speaker, please. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So Hani Perez Sadler, one thirty-nine over Peck Avenue. I wanted to talk a little bit more. Well, first, actually, let me start off with saying that the superintendent's report was great. The report around the curriculum and the scorecard. I'm a school administrator for New York City Public Schools, and we work very closely with NYU. And they, their professional developments around curriculum and the scorecard is one of the top in the city, I mean, in the country. And so to know that our district is working with NYU on this is very encouraging. And I think speaks to Elaine's point just now around curriculum and that director of curriculum position. Being so essential to our district, which is why it was provided. Teaching and learning is the bread and butter of what we do. What happens in our classroom is the most important thing. And so I also think that Christina, another parent, also asked that question, which I think is a fair question for us to continue to ask. I know that our acting superintendent mentioned that there was a conversation happening with the board, but as a public and as a parent. I would like to know how are these two very distinct roles being served? And how if if our students instructional needs are being shortchanged because of this dual duty? That is an impossibility for one person to to do. It is impossible for us to be in two spaces at once. We have not figured that out as humans, right? And so it is impossible for Dr. Haynes, as committed as he is, to do two jobs and to do them well, right? One of them is not going to be at the highest quality, because that is a setup that is being set up to fail. We're not, you know, set up to do two things at once. So again, I think the curriculum discussion should be front and centered. Speaking of instruction, as my husband mentioned, our children were out for four instructional days with a sore throat. We do have a doctor's note that said for them to be kept at home. I I know that one of the members, I don't know if which board member, or if it was our superintendent, that mentioned that there might be an incentive for parents. To maybe, you know, quote, I don't know if it's to abuse the system, but I could have easily said, hey, I think it's COVID exposure, right? And I'm waiting for the results. We didn't do that. We were honest. We kept them home. But we do have a doctor's note saying for us to 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 keep them home. And my kids, like Elaine's kids, are honors kids in the seventh grade, and they were swamped with homework, and they were stressed. About some exams and quizzes that they had. And just talked about how unfair it was that some of their friends were able to to receive remote instruction, right? And because of a COVID exposure, because of COVID, but because theirs was a sore throat, now they don't have access to instruction. The way that their classmates do. So this is an equity issue now as to who has access and who doesn't to instruction. And I think, again, that's something for us to continue to talk about, because we don't have the answer to this right now. Like, we don't have it right. Some of our students are getting the support they need, and others are not. So we need to continue to work on this and and come up with a better policy. And lastly, I know there's a lot of conversations around mask mandates and vaccines. There was recently a mom who lost her ten-year-old daughter in Virginia and was speaking to the, to her Board of Education. Around burying her daughter, and it just brought tears to my eyes as a mom. We're still going through a pandemic. There are still vulnerable children who have yet to be vaccinated. And we do need to have every single mitigation strategy in place to protect all of us while there is a pandemic. There are moms burying their children right now, and so we need to continue to elevate the voices of public health officials. And thank you so much to our superintendent for always bringing in Nurse Aguilar and others. We, this is a public health crisis, and we must continue to to listen to public health experts on this issue. So that we may continue to keep everyone as safe as possible. We have situations where our students are unvaccinated with no air, you know, they're not outside, they're indoors. Unmasked for cafeteria and with no social distance. So and now we're going to have flu season and sore throats and everything else. So we need to be careful and continue to keep protecting our most vulnerable, which are our our children. So thank you for listening to the public health officials on this.
Yes, and I just want to reiterate, reiterate what you said. I'm very impressed with the collaboration with the NYU assessments as well.
Mrs. Sadler, I do want to go back and revisit what you asked for about students who get a doctor's note and have to stay home. We, as a district, don't want to punish students who get sick at home by curtailing their learning. And so I think you said it well, as many of the audience tonight said. This is something that is fluid, and we will revisit and try to make the best educational choices we do for children. We entered this year with our teachers, and I want to commend all of our teachers for doing a fantastic job. Opening the district smoothly and successfully, instructionally. You've heard a lot of compliments about them again, and I want to support them. They came back from a year where they had to deal with a bunch of students at home, a bunch of students in the classroom. And it was so difficult instructionally to deal with two sets of students back and forth. So we, as a learning community, committed to, you're going to teach the kids in your classroom. And we do have great technology and video cameras, which will allow the teacher to be followed. So for those students who need follow-along, we'll allow that. But we're trying to honor our teachers doing the best job that they can at a professional performance also. We will revisit them, because it needs revisiting, and we'll keep that dialogue going. I just wanted to, again, commend our teachers for teaching students that they have. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. If we could elevate Mrs. Moore.
Hi, I'm back. Janet Malo, one sixty-three East Grand. One, I just wanted to mention again that we have, from Sustainable Jersey, we have two more, I should say, the Green Team in town. We have two more meetings before we end for the, for the year twenty twenty-one. One is October twenty-eighth, the other one is November eighteenth. I would sure love to have a guest there. Somebody from the district, somebody from the board, doesn't matter. We need to fill the position that when we first started, Mr. Donahue had, and then it went back to Mr. Koenig. So we're used to having representative from the district, okay? Sometimes it's just as simple as, you know, we're doing such and such cleanup, and we need some kids. You know, you're, you guys are a great source for a lot of our organizations, for the students to help out. And it's a win-win, because we have the extra manpower we need, and the kids get their community service. And the nice thing is they get exposed to something different. So I just wanted to put that as a reminder. You know, on an earlier comment about scores and where we sit as far as. You know, when people look us up as a district and see our, where we sit score-wise. It doesn't always come in favorable. And I said this a long time ago, when they first started bringing in. Oh, I can't even remember what Jersey called them, because I'm at, I'm New York State through and through as far as teaching goes. But, you know, if anybody knows New York State, they've had Regents exams from day one. There's a technique to prep students to take those exams. And I said a few years back, like, I was perfectly willing to come in in those years and say, let me just sit in formally and explain how we do it. But of course, that never happened. But really, so I'm glad you're working with NYU, because they also, anybody in the city, the kids take the Regents exams. And I know I was appalled a few years ago when I heard that the kids were being kept after school on a Wednesday for extra help, so they could get through the exams. That's, that to me was unheard of. You you built it into your curriculum. And you modeled questions that you know were on those exams within your curriculum. So they're used to seeing it, and it just doesn't shoot out at them. So there are so many techniques to doing that, that I hope that starts getting built into the curriculum. I'm glad to see that we're doing a lot of new innovative courses. But I'm also hoping that we're improving upon the basics. Because, you know, I know years ago, watching my daughter sit through an English class or or not so much a math class, but. They were boring, and the books that they had to read were boring. So it it just. I don't know, and I look at the, you know, the summer work that goes home with the kids, and I I just cringe. So I I think we really, this summer's program, I think, was more innovative and a way to go. So I'm just hoping that, you know, even curriculum-wise, and you know what, you have a bunch of great teachers. You've hired, from what I could see, very forward-moving people. Let them do the job. You don't always need a head of curriculum, who obviously right now is kind of overburdened with other stuff. See what the teachers come up with. I know as a classroom teacher, that was the piece that I always hated. Was when we had so-called experts come in to tell us how to do our job. And my comment to them was, I have a master's plus sixty graduate credits in my field. You don't think I know how to do this? So that's my comment for tonight. Just put some trust in your staff.
And if you could please reiterate the dates, November, and you said.
It's October twenty-eighth at seven PM. And November eighteenth, same time, seven PM, and we will be meeting in person in the courtroom at the municipal building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do want to add to Mrs. Malo, because I sat in a meeting with Mrs. Theeman and Mrs. Malo together, that Mrs. Theeman will be picking up certainly parts of this. And helping Mrs. Malo to move that agenda forward in our district, especially with things like student volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Mr. Theeman, I will volunteer to be on that meeting. Thank you, Mr. Theeman, and I'll certainly try to make both of these dates as well. Miss Sidey Corner, we have a couple more. Is this the last? Thank you. Good evening. If you could just give us a moment. Ms. Raftory?
Yes, Ingrid Raftory, fifty-four Euclid Avenue. Now, some of my questions here were answered, especially about the gym floor. I hope it's, it's, you know, going to be open soon, and also the auditorium. But my question is, I asked my granddaughter numerous times, what do you do when you go outside? And she said to me, oh, we can walk around. There's a couple of balls laying around. Sometimes we play, sometimes we don't. To me, that's, you know, maybe Dr. Haynes or the principal needs to go outside and see what happens for that hour or forty-five minutes. But to me, that's not gym. So I'm really hoping that can be improved. Also, you know, we're talking about Dr. Haynes being overwhelmed. I'm sure he is, running, having two jobs at the moment. And nobody said it, but I really wished the board who created that issue. By putting Dr. Bender on paid leave would reconsider. by putting Dr. Bender on paid leave would reconsider and bring Dr. Bender back, who did a fantastic job for a long time as a principal at Lincoln, as a superintendent. So I'm really hoping that you reconsider and make it easier instead of this being dragged out for I don't know how long and bring Dr. Bender back. That would solve a lot of issues. It would save some money for the taxpayers and that money can be used for all of our children. Grants are wonderful, but you know, not all students are. My granddaughter was on the honor roll, not the special honor roll. I'm not sure, you know, how well that went because it was during pandemic season. But I'm hoping that the students, all of them, on, you know, I have no complaints with the teachers, but can do better when it comes to curriculum. And, you know, that's where Dr. Haynes needs to get his position back just as the curriculum director. And let's bring Dr. Bender back. That's all I have to say. Have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comments. And I've witnessed Mr. Cada, Dr. Farrar and Mrs. Cavens, you know, on the field during athletics and physical, physical education classes. So really happy to see the principals involved as well. Thank you for your comments. That will conclude our online portion. We do have time for a couple of more comments. If you'd like to step up to the microphone, I will write down your name because I do have the list. In person. Well, we take, we take the minutes. So when you come on again, yeah, but, yes, but I gotta put it again because it's in order and they take the minutes later on. So do you want to speak first, Mr. Santas?
I just say at this 15 Homestead Place, it probably won't take 30 seconds. When I saw Mr. Phytros' face, instead of the black screen, it distracted me from actually what I wanted to say. This doesn't require a response. It's, it's something a number of community members have brought up to me and I said I would say something about it. And it's something I felt strongly about too. When Mr. Theman sat in your seat, he allowed Mr. Phytros, at the sole discretion of the board president at the time, to be the head of the finance committee and beyond negotiations. Now, the obvious conflicts are there's elementary schools that have nothing to do with Little Ferry. They have broad voting power. They don't have all voting power. They're one member of representative. And certainly we negotiate with Little Ferry on a tuition contract. I would ask the board in January, regardless who's sitting there, that we do not do something that turns its back on Rich Hill Park in the way that that occurred. And we would not put someone from out of district ahead of our finance or negotiations committees. Thank you.
Yes, and we've, we've answered this already in the past about why. And we're not going to make comments on why someone's at home or not at home. You know, that's just not appropriate. That will conclude our public comments off agenda. Go ahead, Mr. Raftery. I wasn't sure if, thank you. And after this comment, this will conclude our public comments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time. First thing is about three weeks ago, I saw Dr. Haynes and Mr. Gomes, was that you? Down at Lincoln School? And I asked them when we could have a sit-down with the public, general pow-wow, I guess, call it. And that was followed up by Mr. Sadler last week, I believe. I'm sorry, last month. Dr. Haynes, are we anywhere with that or? You don't remember our discussion?
I do remember our discussion.
And, you know, this is an appropriate time for you to say anything you'd like in the public comments section as well. So please proceed.
I just want, want to know from the board if they have any intention of having a general meeting with the public to clear up a lot of the problems which we're experiencing now.
Mr. Raftery, this is the time and the place, if you have comments, to make them and we're here to listen to you.
So that's it, right?
I can't speak on things that I was not privy to.
Huh?
I was not privy to your conversation, sir, so I can't make a comment on it. But this is the time to express whatever you'd like to express, sir. Okay, I, I, again, you know, I.
No, no, I'm sorry. You wouldn't know about it. Miss Dr. Haynes and Mr. Gomes. No, you weren't there. No, sir.
And so my recollection of that was I, I mentioned the town hall in the context of, we have three district goals. And those goals will more community input. We have about 16 volunteers online who want to participate in each of the subcommittees of early childhood education, of CTE and social justice. And my talking at that time was having town halls to have more community involvement. We need that to move those goals forward in our district, our learning community.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand a word you said.
So I just, just to, you know, in brief, we have district goals that came up with, with the whole board and the staff is involved with these district goals. With Dr. Haynes said, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but that was apparently what the discussion was about, discussing those district goals with the community.
Is that? So, so, right, the one tomorrow is just for administrators and supervisors and it's the kickoff to choose district leaders who will then start leading those town halls and community meetings. Yes.
Very exciting time for the districts, great district goals. Motion to adjourn? Second, thank you very much, trustee Catcar. All in favor?
Just one thing I would like to say.
I'm sorry.
If you put the podium in front, people can hear.
It was normally in the front, but.
I know what you're saying, but when you're here, these barriers are keeping the person here from hearing.
Thank you for your input. We'll talk to maintenance about maybe a remedy for that. I don't know.